Okay. I'd like to call to order the Wednesday, March 29th, special meeting of the Farber School Committee. Deb, would you please call the roll?
Mr. Aguirre.
Here.
Mr. Bailey.
Mr. Hart.
Here.
Ms. Larvee.
Here.
Ms. Pereira.
Ms. Rodrick.
Here.
Mayor Coogan.
Here.
Let's salute to the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Pursuant to the open meeting law, any person may make an audio or video recording of this meeting or may transmit the meeting through any medium. Attendees are therefore advised that such recordings or transmissions are being made, whether perceived or unperceived by those present, and are deemed acknowledged and permissible. We have no citizens' input tonight, so we'll go straight to the committee of the whole discussion on the Farber Public Schools fiscal year '24 budget. I'd like to turn it over to the superintendent to discuss the format.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. As you know, on March 20th, Mr. Almeida and I presented the draft budget to the school committee as a whole. You've had some time to review the budget, hopefully. We also, on Friday, shared with you all the rationales for additional positions that principals put together, what you have, which you also had time to review. Obviously, the process this year is a little different. We're changing the format based on feedback from the committee. We are not going to have principals come to the podium and present and advocate for their schools individually. I will say that the process has happened internally with us, as it has in the past. Every single principal and department head met with me and our senior staff as we reviewed their school, reviewed their asks, and then acted accordingly, whether we supported those positions. Every position that was asked for was based on data and based on school needs. So we have all of our principals and department heads here tonight, as was discussed at a previous meeting. My recommendation would be that we would start with principals. They are available for you to ask any questions, clarify anything, and then we move over to the departments if time allows tonight. So with that, I turn it over to all of you.
Ms. Larvee.
Yes. Madam Superintendent, do you think we should just follow school by school as it is in the binder? Start with Fonseca. If there's any questions for Fonseca, yes, no, and then move on. What do you think?
Right. I think that there might be some questions for some schools and not for others, so certainly we can give everyone an opportunity. If they have questions, fine, that principal is here. I will, let me just preface by saying, I notified you, Dr. Bronhardt is not here. They have parent-teacher conferences tonight. She will be available next week at the meeting to answer any questions. And also from PACE, Cindy Kudo is not here. She's at a conference, so she will be available next week to answer any questions. Other than Dr. Bronhardt, all the other principals are here, as well as all other department heads. But I would say, yes, we could go school by school and ask if anyone has any questions or clarification, and then if they don't, then we move on to the next school.
Thank you.
Okay. Anything further before we get going? Okay, so I believe we'll start with Mary Fonseca. Obviously, Mary Fonseca is a school off of Bedford Street, and I'll take any questions anyone has for Mary Fonseca. Hearing none?
Just a quick comment.
Mr. Aguirre.
Just when I look at it, I think some of what is different this year than in the past was, we've actually been adding things throughout the year. So some of the things that I would typically want to know would be, how does their administration compare to the other schools? So I would ask a general comment or suggestion to get us that printout that shows us all that. I don't know if it's in there or not. I might have missed it, but that's going to answer some of what would be my questions. But when I look at Fonseca, I know we spent a lot of money there, and I know that's a level four school. Just looking at the new programs, you only have four positions there. So I'm taking from that that you and the principal and the leadership over there think that that's all they need to turn that school around. And am I wrong for that, or is that what?
No, that's actually accurate. I agree that, the thing is, you know that we've had funding available to us. So we have made it a point that to add positions to any of the schools as needed, principals have come before this body and advocated for their schools based on what their needs were. So the structure of that building is already, because they're level four, we already had created a structure for success. We are adding more positions to support the needs, the current needs of the school. But I'm confident that that is a structure that is in place that is needed at this time.
Thank you. And Mr. Almeida, I'm assuming you're going to tell me it's in here buried somewhere, but...
Yeah, it's in the, it's actually, just to point it out, it's in the tab called FY24 Budget Summary, and it's right near the back of that tab. It's, the page looks like this, Ms. Aguirre.
Thank you very much, sir.
Appreciate it. Thank you.
Anything further on Fonseca? Thank you.
Ms. Rodrick has one question.
Oh, I'm sorry.
No, it's just, I just have one question. So when I'm looking at the rationale for some of the positions, right, it's all around social-emotional learning and special education and MLL supports, which we know is kind of where I live, right? But I do have a question about how are we going to support attendance there? Because we ended the school year at a 45% chronically absent rate, and we currently are at a 44%. So I don't see it in the rationale, but if there's some way to explain, like, what are we doing to support that and do those positions?
I think that we also need to remember that we have a new assistant superintendent for social-emotional learning and student services that is coming on board. As a district, we need to have some, an aggressive plan in regards to supporting school attendance, district-wide as well as individual schools. I agree, those numbers are, there's very little difference. We have, you know, our attendance officers and our, every single school this year has, we're finally fully staffed with community facilitators that have done work with that. As we transition, as you know, there's going to be some transition at Fonseca, that will be prioritized as, because if we're going to turn that school around, that 45% of the kids need to be in school.
Yeah, we've seen, I was looking through them, and we have some pretty good positive changes for the other ones, but Fonseca stood out to me, that it really has kind of stayed flat.
Yep, I agree.
Would you, I can speak to specifics regarding what's in place at Fonseca now and continue, will continue to be, that will support some of this. The Fonseca school has an attendance team that meets weekly with the attendance officer. That team includes the school adjustment counselors, the vice principal, the school nurse, the parent worker, the school secretary, the school paraprofessional that works in the office. She's Portuguese-speaking, so she's active on the team as she communicates with a lot of the families. Excuse me. And we have a system in place where there's different tiered supports at Fonseca. So students, we do some proactive stuff that will continue to support the students that are in person each day, that are showing up on time, recognizing them with awards. And then when we get into like sort of that tier two, students that may be either approaching the chronic mark, there are letters that go home, there's parent phone calls that are made, and everything's logged and documented. What we did see when we kind of do a root cause analysis during some of those meetings to look at the students that make up that chronic, at the beginning of the year, there were some challenges with our McKinney-Vento students. And so there were some students that were not attending school for several weeks due to transportation.
Okay.
I'm not sure specifically how many students, but I know for a fact, like, there was at least one set of siblings. So that would add two, you know, two students on top of, you know, the others that may be sick or out of school with COVID. At Fonseca, we also do see an uptick in parents taking their children on vacation. Many of the parents will take their children out of the school for a week or two at a time to go visit family, whether it's for vacation and/or emergencies out of the country. And so that right there will be five, 10 days on a student, and that's not including if that student does fall sick or ill that year. So we really do look at a case-by-case root cause analysis basis, and there's a lot of structures and supports in place. So I think you'll see that on the flip side, where the average daily percentage is up a little bit.
It is, yep.
Hopefully, you know, we'll start to see the chronic go down, but I think that some of what I had presented to you just now is because, is a cause of that.
Thank you for that. Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Hart.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and thank you for explaining that, because I agree with Ms. Rodrick's. I was looking at the attendance rate and the chronically absent rate, and they are, district-wide, pretty alarming at certain points. And the fact that you're meeting with your group, is, did you say on a monthly basis?
A weekly basis, the attendance team meets.
Okay, yep, and that's very good. And I just, I would just maybe also want to know if the other schools are doing that as well. I'm sure they are, and I assume they are, because it's something that we have to deal with. And also, too, just a quick question, I'm on the subcommittee for the parent engagement, and Ms. Rodrick shares it with Mr. Bailey as well. And how is that at the school? And I mean, I guess it's a question for the other schools, the parent engagement as it pertains to the class that's who attends, is that being looked at as well?
In regards to the parents coming forth and meeting with the staff to discuss student attendance?
Maybe not, maybe not that, not that so much, but that actually wouldn't be a bad idea. But I'm thinking maybe as far as, you know, the attendance officer has that affiliation with the families.
Right, so there's ongoing communication.
Is that something that is constantly, daily?
Daily, I would say regularly, yes, between the attendance officer and the community facilitator. The two of them are actively reaching out to parents and families. The families will reach out to us. We've had, and we had piloted the parent worker at Fonseca several years ago as a part of the turnaround, and we've had the same worker, and it shifted over to the community facilitator role. And so she's established a lot of positive relationships with the community overall with Fonseca. And so she does a great job with communicating with the families ahead of time. You know, if we do know that they're going to go on vacation, we will give them a little work. There's nothing that we can really do to penalize the parents and families in an active way without really, you know, going the court route. And sometimes that's a little bit of a challenge, because we want to have those positive relationships with the families. We want to honor the fact that they, you know, are, have a family in other countries that they do need to go back to for different reasons. So the families do work with us. We work with the parent worker, but the attendance officer really collaborates well with the school and is active on a daily basis, not just when she's there. She's always available by phone communication, so if we need children to be picked up, she's always there and available.
And as far as attendance officers for your school, you have one?
I have one.
And that's enough, you think?
I mean, it would be great to have that one available at Fonseca on a regular basis to be a part of, you know, the parent outreach. I know the community worker with our population and just trying to stay on top of the daily phone calls and reaching out to the parents and families. You know, she does a great job in the school clerk.
But she's not always there. She's at another school.
She's at another school, but like I said, she's always able to be reached by phone if needed. But to actively be at the school and meet with parents, that would be a different game-changer if she was physically within the building to be able to hold those meetings. But she's done things virtually with parents over the phone. She's gone out and done home visits as well, so she's very active.
And just Madam Superintendent, do you think that's something we could look at as far as having more attendance officers, rather than have them go to once, go to each, I don't know how, I don't know how they, I think what, one attendance officer has like two or three schools that they deal with?
Right. It depends on the size of the school. This is the first time I'm hearing this, but we did add the community facilitator to do the work, to do that sort of work. And every school has a student support team. Attendance belongs to everybody in the school. It can't just belong to the attendance officer.
I understand that.
The attendance officer has to do the tier three. So certainly, I think that right now, we need to have solid systems in place in every single school first before we, because adding a position is not necessarily going to fix the problem. We have to get to the root of that problem and put systems in place. Certainly, that's something that we can explore to see if that's something we need additionally, but I think that we have to...
Yeah, and I'm not saying that that's the answer to it all, but I'm just trying to maybe look at it, look at it in the chronically throughout the district, so...
Yeah, I agree.
Something's got to change, and I hope it will be this year.
I think it is going to be this year. I agree with you. We're rebounding from the bad habits of COVID, certainly. I'm not saying that that's not necessarily down the road, but what I'm saying is, like, what we said was, we wanted the community facilitator to build those relationships with families. We deployed one to every single school to do some of that work, because some of that work, day-to-day work, needs to happen in the school every day. That's not necessarily the day-to-day work that an attendance officer is going to do. They're going to do the tier three work for the most chronic students.
I think, I think that what you did started this year for is going to definitely...
Exactly.
Toward the end of this year or even next year, it could take that a little longer, but just any ideas that can be helpful to help it out, so. Aye, y'all, thank you.
Anything further for Fonseca? Okay, thank you, Ms. Lacy. Next, on our agenda is the Green School. Do we have any? I mean, obviously, when you look at the attendance across the district, as Mr. Hart and Ms. Rodrick pointed out, it's very, very similar, so I've got to believe we're going to hear a number of the same answers. Attendance across the state is in a very tough spot, so I hope that the habits of the students that thought it was okay to stay home start to get themselves in. It's very important for the district and for our scores. Anything further on the Green School? Hearing none? We'll go to the Laterno School.
If we could just skip over, Mr. Simpson thought that the meeting was at CUS. He's on his way, so if we could go to the next one.
Okay, we'll go back to Laterno. We'll go to the Sylvia School. Any questions on the Sylvia School? Mr. Aguirre.
Various lead teachers, is that to make it similar to other schools? Is that what the, the seven is because of?
They didn't have any at this time, so they've gone to the grade levels and to the subsegment program.
That's where you get the seven, because otherwise, there's not seven units. The, I would say the same question, and I've been looking at the chart that Mr. Almeida talked about, just, it's just begging the question, which I think we can have discussion offline or maybe just look at it, to when there's some that have a lot and some that don't, maybe a one pager, because if I look back to what is in the one pager here, it doesn't necessarily explain why they might be less. So rather than ask that same question over and over, I think between meetings, if we could say, you and your team go through it and look and say, yeah, it makes sense, like, okay, this school has, one of the, Tansy School, I think, has one position. There's a rationale for that. If we could just get a one little paragraph on each of them, I think it'll just help us to... Thank you. Aye, y'alt.
One quick question.
Ms. Rodrick.
I'm going to make the assumption that because we have three SACS, that we're looking at three SCL liaisons to sort of coordinate with those SACS. Is that what we're looking at? Okay. That's it. Aye.
Thank you. Anything further on Sylvia School? Hearing none? Spencer Borden. Spencer Borden. Hearing nothing on Spencer Borden? We'll go to the Tansy. Any questions on the Tansy School and their budget?
I have one question.
Go right ahead, there, Ms. Rodrick.
So why don't we have an SCL liaison at Tansy? So we've got, I know we have two SACS there. We know how I feel about the SCL liaison positions, and so that's always the question that's going to come up.
So I presented that to my SACS, and at this moment, we feel like with the two that we have, we're good. We are entertaining it possible for the future, but with this being my first year, we're going to see how it goes from right now.
Sure thing. It's always going to be my question, because I always want to double-check.
We asked Mr. Brad for that, yes.
Okay, aye, y'alt.
Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Aguirre.
I just want to, just want to follow up on that suggestion. I understand that the principals would ask for things and not ask for things, and sometimes I've asked this in the past, that people don't necessarily always sit, when they meet with the superintendent and others, to see exactly all the pieces. To Ms. Rodrick's point, every school should have a SCL liaison, minimum. That's a minimum, in my opinion. So if we have a school with 700 kids with three SACS, they should have three SCL liaisons? That's a system, and I know it's not going to be perfect. But when we have a school with, what do they have there, one SAC now?
Two.
Or two? You know, we just should look at, what is, what is the rationale for that? So at that school, we have 275 kids, or whatever the number is, 276 students. We have two school adjustment counselors. Now, we all know that a school adjustment counselor is the certified person, whatever, at 276 students with no SCL liaison. Maybe the rationale should be, when you've got 276 students, you have one school adjustment counselor and one SCL liaison, or potentially two SCL liaisons for very similar dollars. It's just more bang for your buck when I'm looking at the, in that regard. But we have Tansy at 2.3 million, and then if I go down to the Watson, with 242 students, it's 2.2 million. So looking at the big picture, I, you know, I've said that before about the, how much more money can we put into the Watson? But when I look at it in this regard, I say, oh, Tansy's only got 2.3 million. So just food for thought. Those are the kind of questions that come into my head. With that, I yield.
Anything further on Tansy?
Okay, Mr. Simpson.
Okay, we'll go, thanks, guys. Mr. Simpson's here now. If we have any questions, let's go back to Laterno. Any questions on Laterno?
Thanks for rushing here.
First chair for no questions. I feel obligated to ask one.
I can, can I ask a question?
How's the one-way thing going?
I don't want him to feel bad.
I don't want him to feel bad. He's here to help.
Before you came, Mr. Simpson, I was asking about the, some things have been added to the schools during the year, and I believe that you had a couple of SCL liaisons at the last meeting. Am I correct on that?
One was added at the last meeting, yes, sir.
One was added. So my quick question to you is, with the, what you have here for five or six positions, you have one more. Is that enough for you in the school, or is it that you feel like that there's things that you need that you didn't ask for?
No, I think for me, I'm taking an approach with labor, the way that it is right now, trying to take a more staggered approach to positions where I can, it's a new position for us at the school. We really want to learn from my, I want to learn from my colleagues how they have leveraged the position successfully, and then be able to build, hopefully, I can onboard one person prior to the end of the year this year, get them trained, get them into our school, add another in July, have those two for next year, and then reassess based on where we're at.
And when you add a position like that, if you have people in-house, is that a priority typically?
We would obviously go through, we're starting a hiring committee. We're identifying qualities that would, we would want to see in order to meet the job description. We're setting, because we do have a lot of internal candidates, so it's important to us to make sure that each of them are interviewed, and we have a strong process that leverages internal candidates and external candidates.
Yeah, that's all I was asked, is that if you have, if you've been helped, if you've been, not grooming, but like getting people ready to work with the children in-house, to me, that makes the most sense, but, and I think that's what you're saying, too. With that, I yield. Thank you, sir.
Mr. Hart.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Simpson, nothing into the school budget or anything for your school, but curious to know what, any updates with the traffic pattern, that's, how's that working out, going?
Yeah, you know, I appreciate all of our neighbors and their support. It was a big shift for the community, but it's a shift for the positive. Obviously, we know inclement weather is when we really feel a challenge, and of course, this year it doesn't snow at all, but we'll be prepared. We have a great team of crossing guards, support staff that help to get the 650 students in and out of the building. But in my informal surveys with the bus drivers, monitors, local, the parents, neighbors, it's generally a positive impact on the school and the neighborhood environment.
Okay, thank you.
Can I just add to that anecdotally? So on a positive note, I drive that way just about every day in the morning as school is starting, and then usually in the afternoon around like 3:00, 3:15. And I can tell you that it's a dramatic difference positively from what it's been in the past. So whatever's happening is working, at least like speaking as someone who goes in that direction every day.
I'd like to get this fist pump on the record, please. Thank you.
Deborah, that's up.
Thank you, Mr. Simpson. Viveris? Do we have any questions for Viveris? You do? Ms. Larvee?
Where's she, way up top? You can probably predict what I'm going to ask you, right?
No, just the, the challenges that you discussed in the first part with the MLL coach. And we recently, sorry for my voice, not feeling that great, but the, we discussed this, what, like three months ago, the subcommittee meeting, and just an update. Can you just get into a little more detail on what some of those challenges are and what you think this is going to look like with only maybe one MLL coach? And there, what do you think with those 12 classes, how, like, what do you think you'll be asking later down, or is this something we should start with now?
It's hard to foresee, especially since it's not something we've done before. And just like any new program, you know, we're discovering as we're going what needs to be tweaked, and you know, what would help us and what would benefit us. And the addition of the MLL coach would be definitely a step in the right direction as to supporting those teachers, because, let's face it, we've never done Spanish instruction before and forever for elementary students. So having that Spanish immersion class, they need a little bit more support than we're able to give them right now. So with the addition of that position, it's going to be, not solely for our dual language, also for our foundational classrooms, but it will be a big added support for them.
Right. Okay, I was, I mean, all right, I yield for now, if anybody else has a question.
Anybody else have anything for Viveris? Hearing none? We'll go to Watson. Watson, I do want to comment. I was in there the other day for reading day, and I want to tip my hat to Kenny and the crew, the maintenance division and the facilities. You can see that school coming together. The additional bathrooms on the second and third floor make the school much more livable for the kids. I think, you know, once we get done there, that's going to be very similar to one of the old small showplace schools. It's, it's got a nice climate, and the kids seem like they were really engaged while I was there, so I was very pleased to see progress on that building. Anything further on Watson? Hearing none? We'll go to Doran. Anything, anything on Doran? Okay. As, as the superintendent said, Henry Lord is going to do a presentation at the next one, so we'll go to Stone. Stone School. Anybody have a comment on the Stone School?
Just one comment.
Oh, Mr. Aguirre.
The question I just have is on the, I believe we have one school adjustment counselor now there for the first time.
Yes, we have one school adjustment counselor.
And then, I know we talked about this in the past, but like the five behavior therapists or whatever the position is called, have, has there been any turnover in those folks, or?
No.
I would just think that the therapeutic day school should have more licensed folks in the building, in my opinion, on the, on the mental health needs and the social-emotional learning and all that stuff. So it's not, I'm not asking you to comment on it now, I'm just giving you my two cents, is that I think that moving forward, we need to have more licensed folks in there, however we do it. I think we need to get it done, because we're spending the money, but I don't necessarily know that we have those. Not to say the other people aren't qualified, but when you're a therapeutic school, you should have more licensed people, would be my two cents. And with that, I yield.
Thank you. Anything further for Stone? Hearing none? CUS Middle School?
Next time? I think that's the lady's, didn't you say CUS was not here?
No, that was, she's here.
Okay.
CUS Middle School, anybody have any questions for CUS? Hearing none?
Yes, I have a question on that.
Mr. Aguirre.
Hi, good evening.
Hi, good evening. So my question is just on the, there's a few positions only that are listed, but looking at the vacancies, I think there's a lot of vacancies at your school.
Mm-hmm.
And I don't know if that, I don't know the rationale and I don't have an easy solution to it, but it begs the question of how many people are non-licensed that are working there, and do we have the right supports in place for that at your school? If you could just comment on your thoughts on that.
Sure. Yeah, we do have, we do have a number of vacancies, both teacher vacancies and paraprofessional vacancies. In the last few weeks, we've actually been seeing quite an uptick in the number of applications we're getting, so I think that that's a good sign, and we've hired a number of paraprofessionals over the last month. Our teacher vacancies are primarily in the areas of inclusion, special education, and I think that that is a challenge this year across the district, is special education positions, and then also ESL positions. So, all of our foundational ESL classes are fully staffed, but the level three and above ESL students, we have struggled to find ESL teachers for, for those students. So, obviously, staffing is a major priority going into the summer and into next year, filling those positions. I think that teacher hiring across the board and across the country has been a real challenge this year. But in terms of the support for new people coming in and those who came in not licensed or emergency licensed, we do have the benefit this year, which we have not had in the past, of an ELA interventionist slash instructional coach that is working, especially with our new English Language Arts teachers, and that has been extremely helpful to support them, observing in their classrooms and doing coaching cycles with them. We unfortunately have not been able to have the same level of support for new math teachers this year, because while we do have a math coach, and she's incredible, she's a coach interventionist, she is actually filling a vacant math position right now. Her teaching load is slightly lighter than a regular teacher schedule, so she is spending some time with new teachers who really have the need, but hopefully next year she will be able to devote her time to her true coach interventionist role and support those math teachers in that way. But next year, you know, and I, I think the, the priority is filling the ESL teacher roles even before we bring in an ESL coach. Obviously, we need to have the teachers, but next year, the idea would be that we would also have an ESL coach to support our new teachers in that area.
So, how many specialized education inclusion teachers do you have in your school budget now?
Right. Uh, in our budget?
Or in your school, in the budget, whatever, like it's one in the same.
So, in our school right now, we have, we have two sixth grade inclusion teachers, one for ELA and one for math. Those positions are filled and are, were, and so those students are getting all of their services. In, in eighth grade, we have an ELA inclusion teacher that started with us a couple months ago. We were glad to bring her on. We do not have a math inclusion teacher in eighth grade right now. However, we are fortunate that one of our math teachers is dual-licensed in special education. She used to be a special education teacher. She's dual-licensed with math and special education, and so she is providing the services and accommodations for our eighth grade math students. And we have a similar situation in seventh grade. Right now in seventh grade, we don't have any inclusion teachers hired. We do have an ELA teacher that is dual-certified with special ed, and so she is servicing our special education students for English in seventh grade.
Yeah, so what happens when that, if you don't have a teacher?
So...
So, what services do the kids get?
Right. So, we do, we have other people who are like paraprofessionals in some cases, or are ISL, who are pushing into classrooms to support our inclusion classes. Those are not licensed special educators, but they are providing the more individualized attention and support that is needed. And then we're gonna be looking at some programming that we're going to need to do during the summer and things like that in order to give more time and attention and small instruction to students that need it. We also do have an intervention block throughout the week, so students who have those extra needs are getting smaller group instruction through the intervention block that they go to.
Yeah, and it's not easy to fill, I get it, I understand it. You know, I've gotten a couple complaints from parents about not getting the services that the children need in their IEPs from your school, and I think when we don't have anybody, we, it, at some point, it becomes a problem.
Mm-hmm.
And then, what do we do? And then if we look across the district, I'm assuming everybody else is having it, but if we have middle school teachers that are, if other schools are filled in and have them, I don't know why we couldn't move some people. But ultimately, we shouldn't have any grade without special education inclusion teachers.
Agreed.
So, I'm not telling you that anything that you don't know, but I can tell you that I've gotten complaints about it, and that's why I'm raising the concern.
Yeah.
But with that, I yield. Thank you for the info.
Anything further for Cuss? Okay, thank you. Next up is Morton. Morton Middle School. Anything on the Morton Middle School budget?
Question?
Mr. Aguirre?
To see, I see the vice principal, and I think that's, the rationale is to do like the other schools with one, one for each grade, I'm assuming, and the, I believe Morton has a little more students, or around the same as Talbot or whatever.
They actually, they're actually the highest, right now, they're actually the highest enrollment of the three middle schools. Certainly, last year, if you recall, we, you know, added a third VP to Cuss. Certainly, that's been a good addition. We've been able to create grade-level teams with administrate, administrative teams. We would like to replicate that at the other two middle schools also. There are significant needs. Every school has subgroup, larger subgroup populations, and I think that they need the support, so that's why the, we're proposing.
Yeah, I 100% support that. And it's not necessarily, you don't need to answer, sir, I just want to make a point, that I've gotten a lot of complaints also about the order in the building and discipline in the building and that, like, so I don't need you to answer, I understand there's two sides to every story. But when I see this here, it looks like we need to do it, but we also need to make sure everybody's holding the kids to the same standards, and if you don't have the three people, I get it, but as far as I'm concerned, when I see that we have three vice principals, we should have order and discipline in the school. And a lot of times I've gotten, and I know, I understand you knew, but I've been hearing this for several years, that that school's changing like this, so I'll tell you right now, I support more discipline there and more structure as far as laying down the rules, but thank you very much. I yield.
Okay. Any further questions for Morton? Hearing none, we'll go to Talbot, Talbot Middle School. Any questions on Talbot's budget proposal? Hearing none. Anybody have any questions on RPA?
If I could just, the principal was running a little late, she's on her wagon, so if we could skip over and bring her up after.
Okay, at the bottom, it's fine. Okay, we'll hold that one. Next up is Durfee. Durfee High School, anybody have any questions on Durfee?
Just a comment, question?
Mr. Aguirre?
There's a lot of positions here. It's hard to go through all of them, but my concern is looking at how many, the ratio, you know, the needs are higher, we've added and added and added to the adjustment council, I see one, another one here, we have them for specialists and, and the like, the, and I think the rationale, maybe Mr. Demarest can answer, but I think the student support specialist one is, is that for the one per grade, like each year you've been adding one?
So, right now, we do have one per grade. This would be specific to the ESL program, the, the high needs that our students are coming in from, from offshore or, or other points on the globe, okay? A lot of the students coming in have a major adjustment period where, where they're adjusting to a new school, a new climate, a new country. Many of these students have experienced trauma or witnessed some things along the way on their journey, if they're coming from especially Central America. So, we feel that this support piece is critical to getting our students settled in and welcomed.
And the adjustment counselor on the, the additional one, you already have one for ESL, right?
So, I have a guidance counselor who is also licensed as a SAC in that role, and her, the, we had over 100 kids come in this year. And, and again, like I said, with the support specialist, the need for counseling is intense. So, looking at these two particular positions, we're looking at someone with language capacity as well, so that, you know, if they, tri-lingual would absolutely be the ideal, they spoke Spanish, Portuguese, and English.
So, that's to service the ESL population. The sheet that I'm looking at with the summary doesn't have that, that's why I wasn't exactly sure, but the other, my last question for you is on the, I believe we talked about this at the special education subcommittee, you're adding a few autism teachers, and can you just tell me again what the leadership is within that population in your building?
Leadership in the special education, so we've got a high school supervisor, and then we also have two cluster coordinators, which is the new term we're using, right? One focused on ASD and one focused on our community-based program. That program is growing, the students that, that turn 18 are staying with us longer. So, one of those rooms, one of those ASD rooms they're adding is for the 18 to 22-year-olds, and then three of the rooms are based on need of students rolling up from the middle school.
So, they're covered as far as?
Yeah, they have, they have support.
It's a separate division of, of that focus?
Yes.
You're not dealing with it all?
No, we have, we have people that are focused on these programs, so they kind of sit under the umbrella of the special education supervisor, and then those two individuals, the ASD coordinator and the community-based coordinator, are the boots-on-the-ground folks that are in there handling stuff every day.
Yep, I'll just say the same. I mean, you have a lot of students in there and a lot of needs, and we're also giving you a lot of positions and a lot of money, and you know what that comes along with, so I'm looking forward to seeing the positive results. With that, I yield. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, I see that Principal of RPA has joined us, so we can jump back up to that one. Does anybody have any questions for RPA? Any questions for RPA? Hearing none?
Yes.
Oh, I'm sorry, Mr. Aguirre, I didn't see you. Go ahead. Ms. Brooks?
Good evening. So, I see that you're only adding one position?
Correct.
According to this, so that would tell me that you feel like you're 100% what you need in order to make the gains over there that we need?
Yes, we reviewed it carefully and we just came to that determination.
Do you have any vacancies right now in any of your teaching positions still, or they are all filled? I know we asked this before.
We do not have a vacancy, but we do have some people who are covered on waiver.
Yep. Similar to my last comment to the Cuss teacher, how about the special education program at your school?
We now, we, since I've spoken with you last, we do, we did hire two new hires who, who are working with the supervisor of special education for the district and for my school, and they're working on making sure that everything is in place for the students who have needs as dictated by the IEP.
So, you hired licensed people since the, since the last meeting?
Those two teachers are not hired, they're not licensed in special education, which is why they're working closely with the supervisor of special education.
So, I missed that.
Those two teachers are not licensed in special education, but they are working closely with the supervisor of special education to make sure that the students' needs are being met.
So, how many licensed special education teachers do you have in your building?
We have two.
And what do they do? Are they in substantially separate classes?
They are in, they are the instructional support teachers.
Yeah, that, that concerns me, it concerned me at the last meeting. Concerns me again about how are we servicing the kids? I think I read in, somewhere in your narrative, that 100% of the students have special needs. Was, like, I think the first sentence in the narrative?
100%?
I thought I read something like that, it was like a, a good number, like it was pretty high.
Yeah, and it wasn't 100%.
It was a high number, correct.
Yes.
36% wasn't it?
Yes, it was about that, I believe 37, if I'm not mistaken.
I'm just concerned when they're not, if we don't have licensed people, we can't necessarily provide the services, and that poses a problem for, I'm sure it poses a problem for you too.
Sure.
But it definitely poses a problem for me.
Mm-hmm.
I know we talked in the past about having second shift workers, so that, you know, you can get wraparound services, is any increases on that, or is that status quo, you just have what you have?
Can you repeat your question? I want to make sure you understand what you're asking.
So, especially in an alternative school, the importance of having workers that work at the time, not necessarily until 3 o'clock when those kids leave. We had talked in the past about increasing the opportunities for having people that would work maybe a staggered shift, so that they'd be working till 6 o'clock at night, attendance officers, whatever people, you know, facilitators. Do you have anybody that is on their daily, you know?
I did discuss that with my supervisor, Ms. Ponce, and we are discussing opportunities for that for next year.
But they're not on the budget?
They are covered in, the budget covers each of the positions that we need right now, but we are working to make sure that some things are staggered next year to be able to offer students the opportunity for some alternative times in the school.
And, and that's gonna require bargaining, because we can't just change teachers' hours, so we're gonna have to work with the union in order to do that.
Yeah. What I was referring to at the meetings was when we, we create new positions, like a community facilitator, if we ever added another attendance officer or things like that, to me, the time to do different things like that is when we're adding those folks, that's what I was referring to. Especially at the alternative school, maybe you got a position that is not being as useful because you need to go and visit these kids after school after hours at night, then you, and the people don't work that way, so that's what I was referring to, but I'm sure you're gonna work with the superintendent to try to get some more, I just can't stress enough that we need to do things differently down there. With that, I yield.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Ms. Pereira?
Hi, just really quick. I know you had, last year, had a guidance counselor to help with the intake process, sort of streamline that process.
Yes.
How is that going? Is it improved for the students? And do you feel you need any more support there, or do you feel it's successful the way it is?
I, it's, it's, it's going very well. She's able to dedicate herself to that. It's not split between taking care of the other guidance council needs that a typical guidance council will have to have, and also doing this. We're able to do more connections with the parents when, you know, following up after the intake process, so it has been beneficial to us.
Thank you, that's all.
You're very welcome.
Thank you, Ms. Brooks.
Okay.
Oh, I'm, I'm slipping again. Ms. Rodriks?
It's okay. I just have one question on the, the priority areas, and I'm just wondering where the number came from. So, the attendance rate, we have the numbers at the top, but then down here, we have a priority area of increasing the attendance rate by a minimum of 10% from 64 and 1/2 to 74 and 1/2, but where did the 64 and 1/2 come from?
We got the information from DESI, from, from DESI.
That's the daily attendance.
Yeah.
Record, so the, most schools, all schools have a attendance goal, and a lot of them, it's to increase daily attendance by 10% and then reduce the chronic absenteeism.
No, just comparing that to the two numbers that were up here, so that's why I was...
Yep. Just confused. Okay.
But, I got you.
But we will look at that, and if it needs to be clarified, we'll give you that information.
No problem.
Thanks again, Ms. Brooks.
Thank you. You're welcome.
Okay. Next up, we're gonna take a couple of groups together, unless someone objects, obviously. Art and music, we have Ms. Francisco here for any questions about art and music.
I do.
Okay, Ms. Larvee?
Art, Ms. Francisco. It's probably quicker, quicker to ask than, does every school have an art teacher?
Yes.
Okay. I probably should have asked Ms. Brooks, but does RPA have an art teacher?
Yes, there is an art position there.
I meant to look at it, I never did, that was gonna be coming up. I yield. Thank you.
Any other questions? So, what else? Oh, any questions about health? We have health here also with us tonight. Any questions about health? We have a couple of smaller groups down the stretch here that if we can clear them up tonight, next Monday, we will tackle the, the pieces we don't get, and I'll just say, put a hold on them, because I don't believe we invited those people tonight, and I don't want to give them, anybody have any questions on the nurses?
She's not.
That's okay.
There's no change.
Yeah, there's no change. How about on the PACE Early Childhood Center?
She's not here. Well, she's not here, she's at a conference. She'll be here next, on Monday next.
Yeah, but if no one had any questions?
No.
Okay. Phys Ed is not here, the school committee is not here.
Phys ed's here.
Oh, I'm sorry. Physical education, anybody have any questions about physical education too? I meant, I should've done that with health, having a bad night. Anybody have any questions about that? Thank you. Um, I don't think the school committee budget changed much, did it, Mr. Almeida? Anybody have any questions on our budget?
No.
Okay. So, um, about, well, special, I'm looking at the big ones we have left, special ed, there may be some, how about student services? Does anybody have any questions on student services, Mr. Aguirre?
Just, uh, just a point of clarification, this Superintendent had mentioned that this was gonna be about schools only.
Okay.
So, I just, I personally wasn't prepared to ask those, but...
My fault. I was hoping there was a couple simple ones, but if not, you're correct.
But I do have a question related to the schools and special education.
Well, we got special ed next week.
But it's related to the school piece, so...
Okay, go ahead.
If I could maybe ask Ms. Open Chain a question.
Good evening.
Good evening.
So, over the years, when we've had meetings related to the budget, one of the things that just doesn't sit well with me is when we talk about inclusion, and you heard what I had just asked a few people, I could probably ask the same question to all schools.
Yeah.
One thing that just doesn't make sense to me, and I know that we're spending a lot of money, and I said this last year at the same budget time, is that when we have children that have an inclusion IEP, we apparently only service those children with special educators in English and math, but not social studies and science. Is that something that is sort of okay? I, I, I mean, I, I, it just has never sat well with me, so I have people, parents, you know, I've had people in my family, the same thing, that when they have a need for the English and math, and they go to social studies and science, and there's not a person, it just doesn't logically fit with me.
Right.
So, you're new, I wanna give you the opportunity to say, but we're spending millions of dollars in additional funds, and I still can't, I just can't wrap my head around the fact that we don't have inclusion across the board.
I agree with you, Ms. Aguirre, honestly, and I think the principals would too. I really, being new on this team, I really need to do a deeper dive before I can answer your question. I agree, their needs don't go away in science, in social studies. If we have strong inclusion models and strong special education in, teachers in inclusion, you can service kids through a consultation model, you know, for example, if I'm in, in social studies and I need to be able to access the text, in a consultation model, a strong special educator, a special education teacher and a general ed teacher should be able to meet that student's needs. The reason why they focus on the, um, the English and the math is because that's the, the services on the IEP, right? Because their goals are typically related to reading and writing and math skills. Those don't go away in the other classes, they're an extension of the, other classes, and I agree that we do have to look at our inclusion model. I think that some schools, and again, I could be misspeaking just 'cause I haven't had the opportunity to do a deep dive into inclusion yet, I think some schools may be able to team, um, a math person with science and a social, an English person with social studies, but I do need to look deeper into that. I agree with you, and I understand what parents would be concerned about. We're not trying to say their needs don't go away, because we typically staff the special education teachers in math and English. So, give me some time, let me do a deep dive.
Yes, no, I appreciate that, yeah, honestly, and I appreciate your answer. One thing that I think might, we asked the question before, and you've said it before, it's very difficult to find a certified person.
Yes.
So, logically, let's say we can find a, a certified teacher in social studies, and it's not on their IEP to be certified, why wouldn't we just have an extra social studies English teacher to service the children that way? You know?
Yes.
Thinking outside the box a little bit, I've been saying this for several years, so I know you're new, and I'm more than willing to give you some time, but maybe we, give you a...
I agree, I feel the same way in our substantially separate classrooms. I'd rather have a certified English teacher in there, not a special education teacher, certified English teacher, and then bringing in some additional special education supports if we can't find a certified teacher. I agree, we have to start thinking out of the box, because the shortage of special education teachers is real, it's not going to go away, and it's not unique here, so we have to do some more creative thinking on how to meet the needs of our highest-needs kids, because again, it's reading, it's writing, it's math, it's executive functioning, all educators should be able to support students in that way.
Yeah, I appreciate your honesty, so I'm gonna be calling a special ed subcommittee meeting in three months, so that's, I think, worthy time to...
Sure.
Make sure that, I'm gonna say it right now, that I want inclusion, I want this type of question on the agenda, so you have three months, and I know you'll be prepared. With that, I yield, thank you.
Okay. Okay, well, we're gonna adjourn now, because next Monday...
Mr. Man?
Oh, I'm sorry, Mr. Aguirre.
Sorry.
I'm sorry.
I just wanted to talk about one of the things that I've mentioned to the superintendent in the past related to, um, the, the needs in the district, the administrative needs in the district, and the, the positions of assistant superintendent, superintendent, and the like. At the time, several months ago, I broached the subject to the superintendent to, to look into considering hiring a deputy superintendent. Schools across the Commonwealth are going to a model such as this, so, such that they have almost like a mini superintendent, or a person that's above the assistant superintendent level, that deals with major issues, that has experience in central office. A lot of the things that I think we need here could be serviced by adding a position of deputy superintendent in addition to our administrative structures. We've supported the assistant superintendents, all of our people currently are new, superintendent is new. I think we should look into, and I'd ask the superintendent to check with her team and report back to us, on looking at a deputy superintendent that has experience in central office, almost like to be able to help mentor certain departments. And going back 20 years, we used to have a model in this district of assistant superintendent for administration, which was more related to contracts, human resources, and sort of the non-educational pieces, and then we had the assistant superintendent for instruction. So, we've had a model similar to what I'm suggesting, but I do wanna broach the subject that I did mention this to the superintendent years ago, I'd love to get her feedback and have her report back on, with her team. A district with this many kids, with this many needs, with this many challenges, can definitely support a deputy superintendent, in my opinion. Thank you, I yield.
Okay.
Can we ask the superintendent just a comment if, if I may?
Do you wanna comment?
Sure. Um, yes, we have had this discussion, I think, when we had some vacancies, et cetera, certainly as we were putting the budget together. I, I think that's a, a suggestion that's worthy of, of exploration. I personally, when we were putting the budget together, we were putting a budget that I tend to, I wanted to make sure that we supported our, the needs of our schools, put the tools in our teachers' hands, as well as our principals, et cetera. We are a high-needs district, we have two schools that are Level 4, some that are, you know, hovering and are in, in need of additional support. It, it is heavy lift, the work that we're doing. I, I would like to further discuss this with my team, I'm not, uh, you know, it's like everything else, right? Usually, you, you try to support all the other departments before, I didn't even propose anything for our department, so, but I, I, I think that's something for us, as we look to the future and moving ourselves to the next level of work, moving ourselves out of Level 4, moving ourselves into a high-performing district, certainly something that we can entertain and explore as a, a potential.
Thank you.
With that, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn, we'll be...
Motion to adjourn.
You have a second?
Second.
Before Deb calls the roll, next Monday, right here again, at 5:15, the next section of the budget. Deb, please call the roll.
Ms. Aguirre?
Yes.
Mr. Bailey?
Yes.
Mr. Hart?
Yes.
Ms. Larrabee?
Yes.
Ms. Pereira?